Twenty-second, 2023. This meeting is being recorded. Will the clerk please take the roll? Bona?
Here.
Harpin? Alaskowitz?
Here.
Sapienza?
Here.
Shade?
Here.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Blackmere?
Here. We have six present, we have a quorum. Please rise for a moment of silent remembrance. And the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its form.
Do we have a motion for the approval of the minutes of August 8th?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. No, that Councilor Obasahan is here. The six of us. Alaskowitz and Wilkinson. Did you second?
No.
No, who seconded it?
Counselor Shade.
I'm sorry. I wasn't really listening. Okay. Hearing of visitors on agenda items. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. Anyone wish to address the council on an agenda item? Go ahead. You guys decide. One of you get up and go. Mr. Smith, apparently Mr. Cardamino would like you to go first.
Number 163, North Street. And I always look about Agenda Item 12-284 in reference to the problem at the ballpark. The slippery surface when it rains. Now, let me be clear about this. Counselor Sapienza was not the one that brought this issue up. It was myself who brought it up because I took a bad fall there. Now, I've been talking to other people, a lot of my elderly friends who said, yeah, it is a slippery surface. There have been no falls there. Okay, so I just want to say I think it's a good idea that we send this to the City Parks and Recreation and see what they can do with this. It's a matter of public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Robert Cardamino, 173, Quincy Street. I would also like to address 12-284. To answer Counselor Sapienza's problem, I talked to the foreman, Bob Lemire, down at... He's the foreman of the Parks and Recreation. And he didn't see any traction problem with the bleachers. And if they were to install some traction strips, when they clean the... When they clean the bleachers of bird droppings and they use a water... But anyway, when they use the water, it's under pressure and they would blow them, strips right off. Counselor, you are beating a dead horse. And many times when you speak, your statements are exaggerated. And you know that when you exaggerate, you know what that makes you.
Next, anyone else wish to address the council on an ordinance, on anything on the agenda? Okay, let's move on. Council Paper 12,218, Mayor's Communication Number 10, requesting the review of taxi ordinance by the Public Safety Committee postponed from the meeting of August 8th, 2023. Do we have an update and a motion from Counselor Sapienza?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to postpone this to the second meeting of September. And at this point, we have sent the ordinance off to the solicitor for review. I just learned a few minutes ago that it has come back. We will present the ordinance as amended to the full council at that time and we'll proceed forward from there.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Counselor Sapienza, Counselor Alaskowitz, any more discussion? There's a motion to postpone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,191, Communication from Counselor Shade requesting Local Department of Health review the rules and regulations to address the storage of garbage postponed from the meeting of July 11th, 2023. Do we have a motion or an update?
So, I know this was being held off because the Public Safety Committee was working on the taxi ordinance and some other items. This still does need to be seen by Public Safety and with the Health Department present. So I'd like to request that that meeting happen and have a return date. What would work best for your committee, please?
I would believe that the best date would be the second meeting of September to return it to the council. We are planning to have a meeting sometime mid-September, early to mid-September, sometime after Labor Day. So we'll have that meeting and that'll be the topic of discussion.
Perfect. Then move to postpone to the second meeting of September.
Counselor Shade and Counselor Obasahan, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,284, Communication from Counselor Sapienza requesting City Parks and Recreation Department look into the traction safety of the bleachers at Joe Wolf Field postponed from the meeting of July 11th, 2023. Do we have a report, an update? What's the status of this, Counselor Sapienza?
I would like to refer to the mayor.
Yes, so it was referred to my office and we will take appropriate action as deemed necessary. So I don't understand why we continue to talk about it.
Okay.
But we would certainly... I know that the team has looked at the stairs and looked at the slip hazards, trip hazards and such. And we are in the process of replacing the bleacher seats themselves. So once that is done, we'll look at the rest of the system.
So how about we file the communication?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to file this time.
Second.
Counselor Sapienza, Counselor Alaskowitz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,286, An Ordinance Amending Chapter Z, zoning section four dimensional regulations by adding section 4.17, refer to the planning board on July 25th where the return date of August 22nd. The joint meeting, we didn't have a quorum on the planning board. So let's postpone this until the first meeting in September with the idea the plan is to have another public hearing on the 11th, on that Monday at 5:30. I'm sorry.
Not just a question. Does that date that you referred to come before the regular meeting of the plan?
After the meeting.
After that meeting. Okay.
Yeah, the next meeting is...
Traditionally, we do it on the same time as the planned meeting.
Yeah, and they're meeting on the 11th and we're meeting on the 12th.
And I'll be at 5 o'clock.
Yeah, I'm hoping, I think we're going to make it for 5:30 this time and maybe they'll be able, we'll be able to get a quorum.
Okay.
That's what Lexi's doing. Are we all set? Okay. So a motion to postpone until the meeting of September 12th would be in order.
To move.
Second.
Counselor Wilkinson, Counselor Obasahan, anyone else? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,295, A Petition from National Grid to Hold a Public Hearing for Two Poll Locations on South State Street. Without objection, I will have, I will set this as a public hearing at the 7 o'clock part of the meeting. At this public hearing at the beginning of the meeting like we usually do for these.
Do you want to do it on the 12th?
And we'll do it on the 12th, as long as we have enough time to publish, which we do because we have that extra week. So I don't think we need a motion. I think I can just file it. So without objection, I set the meeting. Okay. Mayor, you have something to add?
Oh, no.
Or are you waiting for the next item? Counselor Sapienza?
We're also having this...
Yeah, that's going to be at 6 o'clock.
That's going to be at 6 o'clock.
Yes.
Okay, the other will be during the normal course of the...
Normal course of the meeting like we usually have.
Okay, thank you.
They're usually the first thing on the agenda.
Right, right.
And then we close the public hearing and move into the regular agenda. Council Paper 12,296, Mayor's Communication Number 78, A Resolution for the Tax Increment Financing Agreement with Tourists. Without objection, I'll file the communication and Mayor, have at it.
Great. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. At our last meeting, Paul St. Pierre from the Regional, who is the Regional Director of the Western Mass Office of Business Development, gave us an educational overview about tax increment finance, or TIFs. Tonight, I'm joined by City Solicitor Lee Smith from KP Law, Community Development Director Michael New Valley, and Eric Kearns from Tourist, as I present to you the TIF agreement for property owned by Blackington Mill LLC situated at 1470 Massachusetts Avenue. Before we jump into the logistics of the TIF, I'd like to give you a few highlights. As most of you know, the North Adams Comprehension Plan Vision 2023 outlined the historic harm inflicted on the city by deindustrialization, urban renewal, and environmental injustices. It specifically identified increasing hotel capacity and outdoor recreation, tourist, in its economic development and open space priorities. This TIF, along with the vision of Tourist, makes those things come to life. The Tourist team has actively collaborated with the city and built a business that directly supports these transformative efforts within our city. Since opening in 2018, Tourist has welcomed over 35,000 visitors in North Adams, two-thirds of whom come from outside the Commonwealth, bringing outside dollars into our community. As we know, Tourist have drawn significant positive attention to North Adams and has been profiled in many national and international press such as Vanity Fair, The New York Times, Vogue, Outside, and CNN. Tourist has received several awards for their great work in hospitality, including the 100 Most Incredible Hotels in the World, 25 Coolest Hotels in the World, and from our very own One Berkshire, they received an award for putting the Berkshires on the map. Tourist has been a good partner to work with, with the city of North Adams. They currently employ seasonally staff flexing from 50 to 65, and despite the pandemic, have disbursed $6.3 million in payroll to local workers from 18 to 22. During that same period, Tourist contributed significantly to the city's budget through local meals and room tax, over about $750,000 in the past five years. The Tourist team is ever filled in a dual environment of a challenged opportunity that we have here in North Adams. We know that those mills have sat empty for many years. By investing in the redevelopment of the Blackington Mill, the city and Tourist can join together, multiply, and amplify our deep commitment to growing the city. In addition to the Blackington Mill, the Tourist Resort, combined with new publicly accessed outdoor recreations, Tourist has the ability to put us on the map and help us with our bike path. The jobs, additional room and meals tax revenue, increased tourism, and outdoor recreational opportunities are all things that we've been looking for. With that being said, tonight in your packets, you will have a draft TIF agreement. It is still in draft mode only because Paul's office, the EDIP attorneys, need to look at this. However, this has been fully reviewed by our team, Lee Smith from KP Law, who's here tonight to answer any of your questions, as well as the Tourist legal team. We do not anticipate any substantial changes in the document. But at this part of the process, we need to get this moved along so they can get into the September meeting. So that's kind of a brief overview of what Tourist has done for us thus far in North Adams. When we get to the resolution, I'll talk about some of the impacts and highlights of the TIF agreement.
Are we ready to move on to the actual paper? Council Paper 12,296, An Order Approving the Authorization to Enter into a Tax Increment Finance Agreement with Tourist for the Blackington Mill LLC Redevelopment Project as presented in the draft agreement. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Counselor Wilkinson, Counselor Alaskowitz. And any, do, have you, did you all have time to review any of this? And do people have any questions?
Did you want me to read this into the record?
The entire thing? Oh.
I can...
You can read the, yeah, read the order, not all the other stuff. If you want to, go ahead.
You usually make me.
I can do it if you would prefer.
No.
Neither of us?
No. Motion here.
So the highlights of the resolution basically are talking about the property at 1470 Mass Avenue, where the Blackington Mill is located. Tourist is proposing an investment of $17 million into the site to erect a new 50-room luxury hotel to provide 25 full-time equivalent jobs. And they plan to do so and be ready for open to the general public by July 1st, 2026. The fiscal year 2023 assessed value of the site is $447,000. And we have estimated that the projected assessed value of the property upon completion is $4 million. The City Council, tonight, I'm asking you for approval to enter into this TIF agreement. And we are happy to answer any questions. In your packet, you see the sliding scale of the discount from 100% down to 20%. You see the scale of... The thought with the percentages for the TIF agreement is that we have learned that it takes three to five years to really build a hotel and get it up to full capacity. So that's why we were more generous in the beginning of the TIF and tapered it off after years five through 10. We also included in the TIF a discount on personal property, so everything stays on the same cycle. At the end of the day, we are only receiving taxes on $447,000. And by, in 10 years, it will be $4 million and then reevaluated at the end of the $10 million. We feel that Tourist has proven that they are invested in North Adams, that they do quality work. And this is an opportunity to get two buildings, or eight, two, four floors, a one-building development that is in some, needs some work, back on the tax rolls in a positive manner. The good thing about a TIF like this is we will reap the benefits quickly of the room occupancy, the meals, and the meals tax. We know that Tourist, in their current capacity, is full. And we know that from the market data that we're seeing across the city, that more accommodations are needed. We sent the $4 million base on comps between the porches, the investment in downtown, Downstreet, North Att, Downstreet Hotel, as well as the existed Tourist campsite, or campus. I'm sorry, my words are awful today. But we've spent a lot of time with legal, we've spent a lot of time with the Tourist team, we've spent a lot of time with the state working this agreement. And we feel this is in the best interest of the city. And it certainly identifies economic development within our community.
I also want to let, this is more for the public. Tourist will continue to pay taxes on the $447,000 value that it has right now. They just, the tax increment, and I know they did a really good job of explaining it last week. But again, I want to clarify, the tax incentive is off of the additional work being done. They still have a base tax that they're paying, so they're not getting, their taxes aren't going to go down so that yours can go up. That just isn't what it is. It is, their taxes will eventually go up. They will go up more slowly than if we taxed the entire investment immediately. But there's all the other outcomes to it. We will have sales tax for the luxury tax for the hotel motel rooms and for the restaurants. We will also have any other taxes and payroll, et cetera, benefiting from the project. So I just want to clarify that because I always get emails saying, you're raising my taxes to give them a tax break. And that just isn't true. Counselor Shade?
Yes, on that note, and to clarify for the public and through the chair to the mayor, just to make sure, this is only for the new property being developed, not for the existing property.
Correct.
So the existing Tourist that exists is still going to be taxed and assessed every year annually like every other property.
Right. So when we, I'm sorry, Counselor, I didn't mean to count you. But when we talk about the $447,000 assessment, that is on the Massachusetts Avenue property.
Perfect. So just to clarify for the public, Tourist will still be paying plenty of taxes to the city. I just want to take the time to say thank you to Tourist for investing in North Adams. Thank you to the mayor for working with this business and bringing new growth. This is exactly the kind of projects we need to get our city back up and becoming a city that has actual career-type jobs and not just low-paying jobs. And Tourist has been a great employer in the area. And I know that they have done fantastic work on making North Adams a destination. So if we really want to put ourselves out there and be known in the world, Tourist is doing that for North Adams. And so I can't be happy enough to support this. Thank you.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Yes. Question for Mr. Kearns, or if I can give it to the mayor, if you wish.
Of course.
Somebody.
My pleasure.
Certainly, I'm excited about the project. There's no doubt about that. Big fan. I've got a question, though. I don't, you know, you have every right to spend your money any way you want. Why would you spend $17 million to only get $4 million back?
Well, I think that you're talking about assessed value versus market value.
I am. No, no, I am. I was just commenting on what the mayor just said. You're going to put in $17 million and she's going to assess it for $4 million.
Well, there's the improvements to the property, but then there's also the building of a business.
No, I understand.
Some of what we're investing is building the business. And it's also partially about market parity in not only North Adams, but in the Northern Berkshires. So for example, the newish Fairfield Hotel, just down the road in Williamstown, it's assessed at $5.5 million, but because their rate is $16.17, they only pay $88,000 a year in taxes, whereas we pay $1.57 or something on the current hotel.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
No, I was just, I was just curious. I think, you know, I know that they use comparables with other hotels in town, some of them relatively new. I think they're going to find, when you're done, it's going to be a lot more than $4 million bucks.
Well, we hope so.
No, no, I'm just saying, I think...
But we're grateful...
The comparables were poor because it doesn't express the grandeur of your project.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the other one might be the New Williams Inn, assessed at $10.5 million, but because of the rate, they pay similar to what we pay here in North Adams.
But what did it cost them to build?
$45 million.
Shade, well, there's a perfect example. Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Counselor Bona, then Counselor Sapienza.
I know Counselor Blackmere clarified, and again, just what does, just to confirm, because, you know, when we look at the sheet, it does say 100% exemption. And it's one, as she said, it's 100% exemption beyond. So right now, being assessed at around $427,000, there, it comes out to be, what, around $17,000 in taxes?
$16,667, I believe.
And so they will never be paying less than that.
Correct.
Okay.
So when they start, they still pay on the $447,000 and they continue to pay on the $447,000 throughout the project.
Okay.
And as...
So in four years, you know, if the project, you know, is completed, and if it is $4 million, it could be higher. It could, you know, it could be. They'd be paying around $31,000. And then in seven years, they'd be paying, or eight years, $93,000. And then at the end, $156,000. But also in 10 years, that $4 million assessment may be higher.
Correct.
So those taxes could be considerably higher.
And if I could add? So if this project doesn't exist, we're only paying on the, so probably close to $160,000 we would collect on the 10 years versus $842,000 total.
And this is similar to other TIFs that, you know, I think we worked on and hopefully, you know, we see these progress and stick to these timelines. The way I understood also, the $17 million is that it's not all just in that building. You know, it's the whole project around that building, including the landscaping, the bike path and things like that. So, which actually, how typically do those kind of things get assessed and taxed? Is it just the building or like, do you look at all the amenities around the property?
We do, and we hit some of the amenities in the personal property piece as well. But right now, we have a big goose egg of just an empty building.
Yep.
And the land is taxed as excess land, is assessed as excess land, which is not assessed very high.
But is that the same as if it's recreational land?
It would be the same as it is now. But separate from this project, you know, is our bike path.
Right.
And that will also spur more economic growth in that area and into our city.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Sapienza?
Yes, okay. I'm going to support this because I believe that TIFs are a great way of getting businesses interested in investing in our area. And I want to give, commend the Tourist and Mr. Kearns in expressing such an interest in this area. And after living in the area for so long and seeing somebody have an outside interest and want to invest money in North Adams is a wonderful thing. They've seen the potential of the area and they're willing to develop it and to market it and to bring it forward. I think the TIF is a wonderful idea and a wonderful deal. And again, I fully support it and I hope that, I wish them success in their ventures. And I look forward to seeing the finished product.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Obasahan?
Through the chair to Mr. Kearns. I think you, first of all, I'm also very excited about this project.
Thank you.
And you mentioned at our last meeting about this project creating jobs within this area. I think you gave a number that time. What was?
25 is the number that we're estimating for the first year. It's 25 new jobs in addition to the employees that we have already. And then with the addition of probably one or two jobs every year for the next five years, I think, and what we put in our state application, it would get us up to about 33.
33. And for this new?
Just for the new part, yes.
And how many employees have you employed at your current...
Right now, for the summer, we have 64.
64, nice. Yeah, I just want to commend you on that. You know, I have a number of conversations with, whether it's the youth in this area or folks just looking to have careers in the Berkshires. And I've heard nothing but great things about Tourist. I was, actually had the opportunity to visit Tourist this past weekend and spoke with some of your employees there and they just raved about being there and...
So good to hear.
And how much they love, love working there. So I just want to say, you know, thank you for all the opportunities that you are providing in this area. And I'm also in support of this and very excited about this project.
Well, thank you so much.
Counselor Shade?
Through the chair to the mayor or Mr. Kearns, whoever could answer. I see that, I remember in the conversations before... I see that, I remember in the conversations before, there was a planned opening for sometime in 2026. I see that this agreement is going into fiscal year 2027. So what is the assessed tax rate going to look like until this, until this agreement goes into effect?
It'll be on the 4, I'm sorry. Sorry.
No, no.
It will be on the 447.
Okay, so that's going to be the assessed value of the property going forward through that, and then this will go into effect fiscal year 2027 and last for 10 years.
It goes into effect on certificate of occupancy.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
We book it on the TIF agreement, so we have some dates, but when the certificate of occupancy is issued, that's when the clock starts ticking.
Got it. Okay, so if it's occupied in 2026, it'll start ticking in 2026. Thank you.
But the assessed value usually is as of January 1st, so that comes into play too there.
Yeah.
I want to thank you again, Mr. Kearns and everybody there. One of the issues, we talk about the jobs, and that's 25 jobs, and when you gave the presentation, you mentioned about benefits. So some of these, obviously, you're saying FTE, some of them are permanent, some of them are seasonal, but you talked about offering insurance, you talked about benefits. You're taking a salary, and this is kind of just to get that out there. Not only are you paying a salary, they say in the number that you budget, if you're budgeting for employees, is 30% of their salary, add that on to the cost, and that's benefits that are going in. Also, I'm thinking you're going to have a little bit younger workforce, so they tend to keep the insurance risk factors a little lower, so they tend to keep premiums lower sometimes. So I just, I think it's good that you're also, you're not just offering jobs, you're offering jobs with benefits, you're offering a career path, you know, we've got the BCC hospitality program, we've got the restaurant, you know, we've got the food service program at McCann, which I would hope that some of those kids could maybe intern with you guys, programs like that. There's just a lot of opportunity for people to build a career and build a career in hospitality.
Well, thank you for, yes, absolutely, thank you. And one of the points of expansion, and kind of our desire to keep expanding, is to provide people who have grown up in our organization the opportunity to advance further, because we want to keep, we have so many great people, and we want to keep them here, and so providing more opportunity for new management jobs, new supervisory jobs, that allows people to move up through the organization, and in order to do that, you have to kind of keep growing it.
Counselor Bona.
Some of this I'm going to ask you to repeat, because I'm trying to remember. Last, currently, how many rooms you have?
48.
All right, and you're adding?
51.
51, so you're doubling the rooms. And you know right off top right now about what you pay in hotel or room and meals tax?
I mean, since, in the last five years, it's been about $750,000 in total. There's certainly with COVID in there, like, I wouldn't say there's an average over the last five years.
But over $100,000 a year?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
About $100,000, so you're going to double that.
Yep.
So.
And these are going to be higher-priced, longer-stay type rooms. We're having a new full-service restaurant and an events business, which also has meals tax on it. So our conservative estimate now is that this will generate at least 200, I think, what we're looking at about is about $230,000 in additional rooms and meals tax.
A year?
Just a mill, yeah.
A year, yeah. And I think that's important to note, because again, again, people will say you're giving them a break and stuff, but what's unique about this business is that we do have the room and meals tax, which a lot of other businesses don't. So even though we're giving you that exemption, we're still going to get that meals tax. That's not being exempt. So we're going to get, once you open those doors, we're going to potentially get over $200,000 a year additional just from this building. So that's, I mean, that's huge. That's huge.
Yeah, and we're grateful, you know, we're grateful for the TIF agreement because it allows us to, A, secure financing as we go in, it's an unusual time in the world, let's just say, to finance something like this, and so it also provides us the ability to, in those early years, to be able to invest in staffing, to be able to invest, those rooms and meals taxes are performance-based, right? And so having that extra capital to invest in the things that generate that business, marketing, staffing, all those things that we, you know, are important to getting people to come in the door and spend, it's an investment that we're grateful to be able to have the opportunity to have that room.
Thank you.
Sure.
Counselor Sapienza.
Yes, I just believe that the economic benefits that will result of this, you know, the additional income from taxes, from room taxes, meal taxes and the like, plus the opportunity, you're going to be bringing in full-time employees. Full-time employees need housing, full-time employees need services and businesses in our area, and those people will be spending additional money with our local businesses, and if they buy homes, they'll be buying homes and paying taxes on those. And it's just a great benefit all the way around, and I've seen, I've seen what you've done in that area, and, you know, that might actually spur further development down the road, too. You know, somebody sees, oh, hey, Tourist is doing great, I'm going to try, and it's going to, it's going to be a magnet, it's going to be an attractant to other businesses and other services to actually want to relocate here. And I think it's, I just think the economic benefits are just going to be eventually enormous. Yep.
Well, thank you for, yeah, for raising that, and I also think that the further part of this to think about is this bike path, is that that creates in many ways a new main street that connects Williamstown and North Adams, that properties that you may think of as not being valuable, suddenly, if they're along the bike path, it's like, oh, maybe I should open a little ice cream shop here, or maybe I should open a bike rental place, or maybe I should, I think that is, in addition to our work, I think that that's going to, you know, and we hope that that spurs ancillary business that helps support us, but I also think that eventually, that that bike path completion is going to create a lot more of that as well.
I'd just like to add to that, this past Sunday, I rode the Yeshua to Cook Trail, and the number of businesses that rely on that particular trail, there's an ice cream shop in Cheshire, they're doing a wonderful business, and you can see all the bicycles parked outside, the CJ Sports Pub, I believe it's the name of it, the Sports Pub in Adams there along the trail.
AJ's, yeah.
AJ's, okay. It was CJ's at one time, yeah. But that's doing a wonderful business, and again, you see the bicycles stacked up on the side of the building, they have bike racks, and yes, I agree with the bike trail, it's definitely an asset, and that's one of the aspects that I like about this whole project, is it's going to include the future expansion of our bike trail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we ready to vote? Okay, we have a motion to adopt, and a second, we've had ample discussion. I'm just going to do this as a roll call, because it's an order, just to, so go ahead. Bona?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmire?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Six yeas, motion carries. Thank you, guys. Um, let's see, we have no taxi cabs, we have no secondhand dealers, open forum. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. Anyone wish to approach the council? Go ahead. Mr. Cardamino, did you want to speak? Okay, can we please use the microphone, and I don't need tit-for-tat between the two you on every ordinance item.
I'll address the council, I'll give you the last word. But anyway, I think that this project is a great thing for North Adams. You know, a long time ago, this lady I used to work for told me that North Adams was going to be a destination, and I couldn't see it, but now it is. There's some people in my neighborhood that bought a house, and they're from Boston, and they come up on, just on weekends. And I know some other people that have took some options on some houses, and they're from New York City. And, you know, it's only going to raise North Adams and make us a destination for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
Robert Smith, 163 North Street. I want to talk about another safety issue that's been going on on North Street for a while. It seems there's two pit bulls that get loose a lot and attack other neighbors' dogs. And recently, one of my friend's and neighbor's dog was attacked, but worse than that, in trying to protect her dog, she was attacked. Now, this should not be going on. The person who owns these dogs should not have these dogs if he doesn't want to take care of them properly. But it's a major concern because most of the neighbors now are very concerned about morking their animals. I think something should be done to take these dogs away from this person who owns them, because he doesn't seem to want to take care of dogs. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, I would suggest when you have issues like this, that you actually bring them to the administration and the police department, it's more effective. I think that would be a much more effective route for you to take. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council on an issue of municipal significance? Okay, we're going to move on. Mayor's updates. Just a comment about the North Street issue, we are monitoring that situation as we speak. Just want to remind everyone that on Saturday, Mass MoCA is having a concert starting at 7:00 PM. We are expecting approximately 7,500 guests in our community, so traffic will be slower than usual in that area. Also, Saturday night, we're having a drive-in at Mingos for Motorama, which will be from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. And then on Sunday afternoon, starting at 9, I believe it's 9:00 to 3:00, actually, 9:00 to 3:00 on Sunday, the main street will be shut off as we host our annual Motorama. So I hope all of you can come down and join us. Thank you. Other, okay, so, committee reports in minutes. Liaison updates and counselors' concerns. Counselors, Wilkinson.
Counselors, I'm more than one. Okay. I have a concern. Concern is somewhat environmental. People that know me know that I have a degree in environmental science, so I'm very cognizant of the environment. I received my agenda by, electronically, by email, and I was going to print it out, and I always check, but the phone rang and I didn't, so I pushed print. It's 70 pages long. We used a half a ream of paper. Now, the one that's here tonight is double-sided, mine wasn't. So mine was twice as thick. And then we have one, we have about 20 copies here in the room tonight. I'm sure the city doesn't get much of a discount on its paper, and it's environmentally just poor. All the counselors that are in this room tonight are very knowledgeable. I'm sure every one of them uses a computer. I'm sure every one of them reads their agenda on their computer. And I was wondering, if I could ask through the chair to the clerk, is there any ordinance that we have to print out all this wasted paper?
I think what's happened is people have showed up and wanted copies, and so.
Well, yeah.
Instead of having a few and deciding who gets them.
I understand that, I have no problem with them getting the actual agenda, but all the supplemental information, you can hand it to them when they're in the audience, there's no way they're reading this before, even understanding any of this before the meeting starts or during the meeting. This is just a plain waste of wood. Thank you.
Thank you. At least they're not dropped at our house anymore by the police department.
I never got mine. I live too far away.
Counselor Shade.
On that note, would it be possible to have a printer in the room, and anybody who requests, we can just hit print on the laptop and make a copy for anyone who wanted one?
Or we just bring our laptops?
Well, for us, but I mean for the public.
Yeah, I think that.
That way, we don't have a bunch of copies.
We, these, I mean, what has happened is, I think, what started this is people would show up, counselors, not the public, would show up without their packet and say, oh, do you have a packet? So it was easier to print out a bunch of them. But.
Can I follow up?
We usually do about 15. That takes care of.
I think that's as much. We can talk about that, have a conversation about it. Okay, go ahead.
Now, you may forget what I was going to say. I see nothing wrong with, we can see the huge audience that we have here tonight of printing maybe five, so if there is someone that doesn't want a copy, there's no excuse for a counselor, him or her, to not show up without an agenda. I mean, you're supposed to come prepared.
Counselor Obasahan.
Is it possible to just project this agenda on the screen, like, for those, I know that may, we may have to turn off some lights, but.
Yeah, that's a problem, because then we can't read the agendas that we bring, at least us old people who can't see as well.
Speak for yourself.
I think we'll just get in the habit of just having a few available in case somebody runs out of work without it, left it on their desk, or somebody in the audience wants one, we'll just, we'll cut back on the copies and expect people to come prepared, or with their laptop. I know Counselor Lamb and Counselor Merrigan used to always have, you know, their little, the whatever. Some of them weren't laptops, they were smaller than that, but if people want it, they can have that option, too, as long as it's not blocking the mic.
Didn't want to make a big deal out of it, was just bringing the idea forward.
Okay. Counselor Alaskowitz.
Through the chair to the mayor. I hate to put you on the spot, but we found last year to be very successful with having volunteers out for parking during a large-scale event, and I was just wondering if that was part of the plan next weekend?
Yes.
Are you talking to your mic? He can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
So it means I can't hear you.
I'll repeat myself, Mr. Cardamino. So my question is through the chair to the mayor. It has to do with, last year, it was very successful to the city to charge for parking during a large-scale event in Mass MoCA. It helps, it helps increase our parking reserves, which we use to buy new police cruisers and whatever else, but my question was if the mayor had any plan of doing the same again next weekend during the large, or this coming-up weekend during the large concert in Mass MoCA, because they're expecting 7,500 people in town.
Yes, so our plan is on Saturday, we will have a team deployed in St. Anthony's parking lot. We will not be monitoring Center Street for this event, but we will for fresh grass.
And just one follow-up.
Yes, sir.
So we find that during these large-scale events, the people who do pay for permitted parking in the Center Street parking lot, kind of, they lose their spot for the weekend.
In.
Residents who live in the buildings around the Center Street who pay for parking?
So Center Street, we probably will mark off those outer spots that say permit parking only, and then when we have fresh grass, we'll have monitors in that lot.
Thank you very much.
Because the number is smaller, it's only 7,500, which is a big number, but compared to fresh grass, it is a smaller concert.
It's also a one-night deal.
Correct. It's one day.
Which is a little different. The other thing is, can they, I know that there's been issues, people that live kind of in the River Street area and some of those side streets have complained about people parking and blocking their driveways.
So we've put up a series, a lot of new no-parking signs.
Okay.
As well as we will start marking off early on Saturday.
Okay.
Not only River Street, but VZ and Williams, all the way up to Liberty, North Holden, and those areas.
Yeah, I got complaints at the last several events.
We can put up as much signage as we want, they still park on corners, and we.
This is true.
Get them, and we try to be friendly.
I know.
Counselor Bona.
From that, though, if you put no-parking signs where parking is allowed, it can't be ticketed, though, can they?
If they're parking too close to a corner.
To a curb, but I'm just saying, if there is legal parking there, because I know sometimes the issue has been, parking gets congested, but it is still legal areas.
Correct.
That they can't get ticketed, but if corners, they can, and blocking driveways, they can't.
After the, there, I believe it was a Sunday concert last year, we had a big to-do with parking, and we realized that there were a lot of areas that were designated as no- parking, and we realized that there were a lot of areas that were designated as no parking that didn't have signs. So we made an investment in signs and put those out, so that has hopefully remedied some areas. But specifically, if you go up Houghton Street and turn right onto Liberty Street, that is all parking. But when you get parking all the way down the street, it turns into one lane. So we try to limit, put up no-parking signs that day for the hill part and the corners. We do the best we can.
And you're also taught, when you learn how to drive, not to park on a hill on a corner, but that's beside the point.
You'll be surprised.
Otherwise, you would look at, people obviously never did park on East Main Street, don't pay attention.
And, what?
Okay, go ahead.
And then, while I know it's not, it's sponsored sort of by the city, but Motorama, what happens if it rains? Does it just get canceled? What happens?
No, we have a rain date. I'm not sure.
Was there a rain date for Motorama?
I think there is. I'm not sure what the rain date is. I'm not sure about that.
Right now, the weekend's looking iffy.
It's not going to rain.
Okay.
Well, there's also difference between a rain and a downpour. I don't think they cancel.
Well, when it comes to classic cars, I don't think they care.
They don't, well, they don't come out in it, but there's, it's not a public safety issue.
And then just one last reminder, mayor, I noticed more cars have been parking on the sidewalks again, so...
I haven't been out on my patrol.
Yeah.